Good enough for gavel. I'd like to open the Falmouth Public School March 24, 2020 School Committee Agenda on our Remote Access Meeting. I'd like to take just a moment of silence. One of our colleagues, Lisa Hart, her father passed this morning. And I think all of us are very saddened by that. And obviously pray for her and her family. Because these are obviously very trying times when parents die. A moment of silence, please. Thank you. I remind everyone that this meeting is being telecast and recorded on Channel 14. I also remind any member of the public who wishes to make an audio or video recording of the open session of this meeting to first notify me as the chair. And I will then inform the public of the recording as required by the open meeting law. And Stephen already touched base with this. It's good to see you, John. Per Governor Baker's order suspending certain provisions of the Open Meeting Law, GLC 30A Section 20, the public will not be allowed to physically access the school committee meeting. The meeting can be viewed on Zoom. Go to zoom.us, join, and the meeting ID is 247-774-022. Recording of this meeting will be archived. Any public comments? Anything at all, Lori?
We, the only, we have an iPad present and they're...
Is that me because that's where I have my... I have all my school committee packet on that.
So, okay. That maybe, yes, that may be, so it doesn't look like we have any public comment.
Okay, thank you. We're going to change the order just a little bit. And again, Andrea, thank you for this. It was an excellent suggestion to do the superintendent's report right, right after the public comment, which is now. Because we want to obviously talk about the virus and some concerns that we have with that. Lori?
Yes, and before I give some updates and we can start discussion, I do have a message I would like to share to our staff and students. During this most difficult and uncertain time, a time when coming together and comforting each other would make things better, we must stay apart from our friends and our loved ones. We will get through this. We must stay positive. Find ways, perhaps new ways, to engage with each other, to find the best in ourselves, and to be kind to those that may suffer through this pandemic. We must do our part to show, to slow the spread of this virus. So for now, we cannot be together. To our staff and students, we miss you. Our students bring us our greatest joy. We hope you are having fun and finding joy and new way to engage in your learning and to engage with your friends virtually. We will get through this. At some point, we will be seeing your wonderful faces and looking forward to challenging your great minds. Schools are not the same without you. We miss you. We will see you again soon. Be good, be well, and show your Clipper pride. So, just a few, few updates, thank you. So, schools are now scheduled to open on April 7th with the governor's close of the, or order for the Stay-at-Home Advisory. That puts us to April 7th this, this time. And if there's any other additional changes, of course, we'll have those notifications out immediately. We passed out our learning plans, our continuity of learning plans and our Chromebooks on Friday. Everything can be found on our Teaching and Learning Landing page called the Continuity of Learning Plans. We are adding additional resources for teachers and for families to access. Please know we prepared two weeks of work in the learning plan. Families can pace themselves. Teachers are there to support the students and help with that as well. If you want more work for your students or your children, there are the additional resources, so you can certainly access that. If we are out longer than the April 7th date, we will have additional plans to share. We continue our food service. We moved to a Monday, Wednesday, Friday pickup and delivery service this week. On each one of the days, families are getting two days' worth of food. So, that just cuts down again a little bit on the social gathering. And we do have the pickup curbside and, and the delivery. I just want to remind people, our families, if anyone is in need of the food, just write to us at info@falmouth.k12.ma.us. But if you're driving by one of the schools, please pick up a meal. We have extra. And we'll get back to you as well. We just, to try to keep account, it's great if you kind of let us know. But either way, the meals are there for you. Our Cape Kid meals are, continue to be delivered once a week. That is our Weekend Backpack Program for our students. But now we are doing a full week of meals for those students as well. And that will continue. I was pleased that Governor Baker gave us that flexibility during this Stay-at-Home Advisory that we can continue to, to feed our families and in a variety of ways. So, appreciative of that. And I'm excited to announce Thursday, this Thursday is going to be our First Spirit Day. And so, everyone wear our maroon and white and take pictures and send into Facebook and Twitter. And there's going to be more fun to come after that, but I don't want to give away our surprises. So, be watching for it. We'll let you know.
Melissa can wear her cheerleading sweater.
Oh, that's rich. Cute, and you can wear yours.
Except mine has an L on it.
That's A-okay.
Any questions for the boss, Kelly?
Yeah, just a quick question. So, like, almost like I mentioned at the very start, you know, it's really nice to see everybody's face. And I'm sure, you know, teachers and staff and families feel the same way. But a lot of people didn't, you know, either didn't know how to join our Zoom or just didn't want to. But it would be really nice if we had like that, the video that, of the statement you just read, if we can share, share that through Facebook or any videos that I think, you know, you can share through Facebook where people can actually see each other, I think is very comforting because we're so limited in our social interaction.
Okay, well, I'll work with Ryan. I'm sure he can do his magic on that.
I'm sure he could. That'd be nice.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions?
I mean, this is sort of related to that as well. I'm just wondering, and I'm sure we don't actually have an answer to this yet, but are we thinking we're going to keep our regular every other week schedule and do it through Zoom? Or are we thinking that already that we might need to meet again as things evolve? Do you have any sense?
So, you know, we get our information quickly. I would like to reserve the, that we may need to come together sooner. I definitely want to keep our every two week for sure schedule. And we may need to do that more. We will be getting more guidance this week again. And so, on Friday, I may have a better idea if there's some things I think that we, we need to discuss. I don't know that. I don't know what, what will be coming out. But at, at this time, it's, you know, moving forward as we know it. And at this time seems to be our key word.
Yeah.
So, I guess that we, we actually have a workshop scheduled for next Tuesday. We were to review and finalize the mission, vision, and core values to go over. So, we actually have that already scheduled. And it would be easy to make that, you know, a combined meeting. So, when we put out an agenda, we could, we could possibly do more. We have some announcements to make or some decisions to make.
Okay.
Thank you.
Melissa?
No, I just had a statement. I mean, you got the Spirit Day, that's awesome. Excited for that. And, and everything is, especially, you know, the food programs happening and continuing and the great communication. It was great hearing Patrick on the announcement too, including him in that. And then just that, you know, the very good communication with the, the continuity of learning page, how it's broken up by the different grades and everything with the examples and the schedules. And that letter that came out, was it yesterday, was, or today, was fantastic from the BU doctor there. That was really excellent. So, just kudos all around. It's good stuff.
Thank you. Melissa?
Speaking of Zoom, I was sort of thinking of the kids that are missing their friends and the teachers that are missing their students and the, the social aspect of the children. I know that there's been a lot of, at least in my house, you know, missed opportunities. My son had his birthday, his big 10th birthday last week and wasn't able to spend time with his friends. However, he did get a really great shout out from Crooked Coast. But I was sort of thinking, since we've, I provided the students with their Chromebooks and we've got this Zoom capability through, that they could stream through their Chromebooks, maybe we could consider having a very informal at first classroom type setting, like, you know, let's all try to meet at whatever time or, you know, some of us could meet at this time or, I'm just, I'm sort of thinking, we've got the technology, we have Comcast that's helping us with some families that are requiring some additional internet services. And I'd really like to explore that possibility.
So, we already have some teachers that are actually asking to be able to do that. So, that's really exciting. And I think it would be very exciting for, you know, classroom to get together like we are right now and to get to see their classmates and see their teachers. Basically, so we are actually getting ready to write guidance tomorrow morning with the principals and send something out. We certainly want safeguards in place and we want parents to be aware and approve that, you know, the, the students will be participating in a, in a session like we're doing now. And just, you know, some, a little, some guidance around it. But we certainly don't want to stop the creativity at all. And, and we're glad that the teachers so want to see the kids' faces because that's what brings joy to us every day is to see the, see the faces.
Andrea?
Thanks. To kind of go along with that and also with the discussions on the continuity of learning plans, which are fabulous, I think there's been some question and we could use a little clarity just on expectations. So, if some classrooms do move to a Zoom platform, is there an expectation of students to be there at a certain time? The work that's being requested, what sort of, what are the expectations of those and what flexibility is in place for our students and families?
So, I think, I think the key that Melissa was saying, like in an informal session, and if it's working, we certainly don't want to continue a classroom setting if, you know, certain students are unable to participate. But, you know, when Melissa said as a way, in the informal way of everyone getting to see each other and catch up, you know, maybe share what books they're reading or an informal way opposed to a, you know, trying to mimic a classroom setting, I think is, is very exciting. I think that's, you know, what we want to, to kind of outline, you know, tomorrow. But also, we have the Google Classroom that students are used to being in with many of our teachers and they have that platform. We have our new LMus, the Schoology. And many teachers have already started using that with students well before, right? The same as Google Classroom before we were in the, the situation of a school closure. And so, those situations will continue. And I think the teachers are figuring it out, you know. With the Schoology, you know, they don't have to be there all together. And it's the one nice thing about a platform, right? It can be asynchronous. So, work can be put up. Teachers might do, you know, a short clip and have it there for students to see anytime they want. There's, so they can, you know, have work in folders, so they can actually work in it. If we're looking at a classroom setting, I definitely would recommend the Google Classroom or the Schoology setting. But I think Zoom is a nice fun way of staying connected, which I think is really important. Those relationships matter. And it's a great way of being connected during this time.
And what grade levels are you using, Schoology?
So, it could be any grade levels. It was just introduced last August. We just started briefly with the first PD around Schoology. And more teachers are, you know, gravitating to it over time. But it definitely, there's a learning curve and there's definitely some professional development. Sonya just put out our Continuity of Professional Learning Plan on Wednesday, or Wednesday, Tuesday, yesterday. I'm sorry. The days just keep going. So, it just went out and teachers are already signing up and that's some of the professional development. There's not the expectation to use Schoology. That was never the plan, even when we started last August. It's just a very dynamic platform. And so, teachers are doing their professional development. We even have some teaching assistants that have signed up. Very excited about getting to learn more about it. So, this is just an opportunity, a positive way during this school closure time for teachers to actually learn. We had a lot of people signed up for summer and I think they just moved up their timeline and, and want to get started now. So, we're really in the learning phase in, in all of this.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I just have so many, everything you say makes me think of something else. So, related to the professional development, and maybe you've already thought of this, but I just want to mention that if we can offer the teachers and the assistants some additional PD around trauma-informed classrooms and trauma-informed teaching because this is so traumatic. And when our kids do come back, they're going to be a wreck. And not just that, but it'll help our teachers. So, that was my second thought is that, you know, for people who have chosen a social career, who spent, who are so connected to so many people, this is really traumatizing. And so, to not just have that PD for the kids, but to also help them process through what's going on now. And part of that should also be reaching out, you know. I, I don't know if we're, if our teachers are being encouraged to do this sort of thing. I think that would be great if they could see each other and see other, other, you know, the team teachers and talk through the, the shared chaos. Might be really helpful. Sorry, my voice is super scratchy. I have such a cold and now I can finally hear myself. Anyway, those are just two random thoughts.
I, I love the trauma-informed PD option. And we are continuing to get other suggestions as well and putting things together. I do think teachers are getting together in formats such as this. And Sonya, one of her PD was a book study, The Growth Mindset. And she had 24 books and she's setting it up in, in Schoology. And I don't know, within a couple hours, she had all 24 participants and a waiting list. And so, I do think that people want to be connected. And so, yeah, we will look for those opportunities.
Speaking of trauma, one of the things that you put out within the last probably week was the availability of guidance counselors. And I really believe that we should probably earmark that again for our students and even staff to contact those people who have been professionals in that area to support and help. We have obviously them, we have crisis counselors, psychologists, and things of that nature that we, we need to utilize if needed, but at least to get that out there for those people to, you know what, I'm going to return to school or I'm not returning to school or this has been a bad, bad week and I need some support. I need to talk to somebody and not just their friends. I know friends are a great ally, but sometimes we need more than that.
Absolutely. Our Adjustment Counselors attended some PD and there is a secure platform. And so, with parent permission, students will continue their sessions with the counselors. The Gosnell counselors are also reaching out to the families and continue to provide their counseling service as well. So, and there may be, you know, there may be new students that we need to, to connect to counselors during this time.
You know, I just have a comment on Schoology.
Yes.
Just, just a suggestion, Lori, my son's Spanish teacher, Wesley Vanjo, is in real experts in all seriousness in Schoology. Because he was, instead of using Power School initially, he came from Howell High School. And he's really well-versed. So, he was actually still using Schoology before we'd started using Schoology. So, he might be a resource to connect with.
Yeah, that's great.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, Lori, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Discuss Policy Section J.
Phil, before you move on, there are a couple people that I don't, actually just two, I think that, one, we don't know who it is, and Tiffany Van Mooy, did you want to take any public questions?
I, I think we can in a circumstance like this. I think that's important to do. So, if there are any.
Tiffany, would you like to participate or have any public comment?
I think I'm happy to be here listening. Thank you.
Thank you, Tiffany. We're glad you joined us.
Thanks.
Anyone else? Thank you, Tiffany.
And I think we identified the iPad was Terry's.
Yes.
Yeah. So...
And thank you, Terry.
Yeah.
Discuss Policy Section J, please.
Sonya? Okay.
Did we have you, Sonya? We're on mute.
Are we doing it at the same time, Sonya? I'm trying to, yeah, there you go. Okay, we were doing it to say I was unmuting her and she was muting. All right, Sonya?
Okay, we're gonna try again.
Yes.
We presented Section J at our last School Committee meeting. And so, now we have an opportunity to go through the second read and to receive questions and feedback so we can address those as we prepare for the final presentation of Section J at our next meeting.
Any questions? Kelly?
I had a couple questions. So, one is, and I did, Terry, I finally did send this to you. But one, two quick questions and then one more conceptual. So, on JJA, which is the Policy on Student Organizations, the very bottom of it says that student organizations at the high school have to, have to relate to subject matter in the curriculum. And, and that's at the discretion of the principal, but I'm just wondering if it should be rephrased to say something about, you know, instead of curriculum, which is so specific or subject matter, that it's something a little bit more general because like clubs like the Gay Straight Alliance, that's not tied to curriculum, but we would never want to discourage kids from coming together and supporting each other either. So, that's just one quick thought. And I know we, I don't know if you want to try and discuss these or if you just want to take my question and move on, but...
So, I think that's a very valid point. So, I think that we can go back and the Policy Subcommittee is meeting next Monday. And so, this is why all these suggestions are great. And then we can, we can make some edits.
My second short question is on JLCA, which is Physical Exams of Students.
Okay.
And it's actually the very top line about screening students for sight, hearing, and BMI. And it doesn't have any provisions in here for, for kids who really should not be screened for BMI. Because I know, you know, it's the grades that they're doing this, eating disorders are an issue. And so, screening for BMI could be a huge problem. So, we should at least have some phrase that allows that to not happen. And then my last question was just about, there seems to be a lot of deleted policies. So, I was just wondering why? There's so many.
For a great majority of them, they were procedural and they are also included in handbooks. So, there were a number of decisions about items that were already covered, both in the extensive attendance procedure and then in the disciplinary procedures, which are also not only approved in our process of looking at the handbooks through school committee, but also has the eyes of our, of our legal counsel to view them. So, they are vetted. And so, a great number of them are there. And then there are also a few of these where they're either touched upon in part in the new policies or they were redundant with some of the existing policies that stayed.
Okay.
I think that was one of the things we learned going through this process with Mask was that there were a great number that had been introduced over time that might have been meant to take the place of something else. And we had kept something else and as well as introduced the, the newer policy.
And then my last question was just if we're going to get an updated medicine to students, one, the one that was on hold.
Yes. So, I know that we were still working to gather some information to make sure it was as current as possible. So, I think when we get to all of the health policies together, that will be part of that.
Okay. I just wasn't, because one of them, I think we actually got updated before we voted. So, we're just going to hold that one until the end?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Very.
The school committee will see the handbooks too.
Right.
So, anything that got moved, you can see it in the handbook. It's not, so that'll alleviate the fact that people think things are totally deleted. They're just some, many of them are moved, actually. Well, I, I don't know if many is the right advert, but some are moved, so.
Any other questions? Sonya, I have just one thing for you and that's more of a comment on the Athletic Concussion Management Policy and all that material associated with students coming back from injuries. I really like the fact, obviously, a lot of this comes from the state. I understand that. But I like the fact that there's so much training for everybody involved with kids. And I think that's really important to note. So, thank you for that. I think that's a good policy.
I'm gonna give a shout out to Julie Williams-Tinkham and to Tim Wakefield that actually went through the policy and helped us strengthen it, so.
Excellent. Anyone else? Any other comments? Okay. Next, review Superintendent's summative evaluation process. Kelly?
She's muted. I'm sorry, I was trying to share the file. I don't know that I'm actually going to be able to, actually. I'm on a different computer.
Is it the one that was in the packet?
Yeah. So, I mean, everybody has it.
Yeah.
I think the most important thing is to just... I'm going to give it one more try. For some reason, it doesn't recognize.
Just check the settings, they should be fine.
Yeah, I don't know. For some reason, it won't let, I'm on my husband's computer because mine... Oh, here we go. Okay. Didn't like it, but now it does. All right, can you see it?
Yeah.
Yes.
Great. So, I think the most important pieces are things that everyone will remember, this, we're in the summative. So, the, the top date, the March 24th, the first thing on there is the Superintendent's Update on Goals and Progress. And the Evaluation Subcommittee decided to take that out of this meeting, even though it normally would happen here, just because Lori has got her plate really full. And preparing that presentation seemed a little bit off the mark for the stuff we're dealing with. But the rest of the schedule is the same as the one that we presented the updates to before. Basically, the observations should... Basically, the observations should be done by now, or the next couple days, but if you haven't started one, please don't start one, because Lori's got her hands full and shouldn't be trying to meet with people to finish up those observations. And then the deadline is April 1st, which is when everybody will submit the, the final evaluation, and I did, or I hope you got today, I think I hit send, the, the file that you actually use, and it's got everything filled in already, is part of the packet as well. So, just going quickly, so that, because a lot of this is repetitive, and I will, our Natalie, or maybe both of us, will get together with Lisa, because this will be new for her, and make sure that she's clear on it, but basically, each school committee prepares their own summative evaluation on the goals, the standards, and student learning, and to do that, you use the evidence that we've been collecting all year in those purple packets, in your purple folder, and the goals report from the Superintendent, which is what we normally would have done tonight, but we will get it in paper form at some point before people start filling out their evaluations. The committee member observations that are already done, I'll send out a copy of all the ones that are done to everyone, so you can use those to review, especially for the goal, the goals for the year, and then any other evidence that you might have collected during the year or might be relevant. One of the things that we usually look at were the calendar printouts, which obviously we can't go into the office now and look at those, so we may just have to have, you know, tailored questions, and, you know, just keeping in mind to be thoughtful about it, so that it's not a giant time suck for Lori, who's putting out fires every day, more than usual. So just a couple quick tips, proficient is a perfectly fine score, and exemplary is reserved for performance that could be a model, if you don't score proficient, you have to write a comment that explains it. Worth noting that if you open the document in Word and you double click, it'll mark the boxes for you, so you don't have to try and like, print it, write an X, and you do pages one and two last, and everything is public information, so keeping that in mind, of course. So, this is what it looks like, this is page one, these are the boxes that you can actually click on, and they'll fill in for you, and then you'll see on page three, this is a copy of the version that you got emailed today, everything is already inputted, the description of the learning goals, and which indicators apply to them, this, it's all filled in, so all you have to do is your piece on the evaluation, they're already ready to go, and, I think that was it, let me make sure, oh. Then, we'll get together and compile all of them into one summative evaluation, based on everyone's individual evaluation, that will go to the Superintendent, and then we will present it and vote on it in open session, just like every other year, so here's the part that actually matters. Send in your last observations, if you have them, but don't start a new one, it's fine, we'll just make do with what we have. I'll email all the completed observations out to you, and then finish your full evaluation and send it by email by April 1st, and then, of course, don't, you know, don't hesitate to ask if, if you run into question, issues or have any questions. Okay, now I have to figure out how to stop share. So I also emailed earlier in the day, this document, but in PDF, and that is the guide for how to complete the evaluation, so, I mean, I know, I recognize this seems totally off the mark to be doing this, but it's one of the few things that we can actually still do, so, you know, please, you know, make every effort, if you can, to get it in by April 1st, and we'll just do the evaluation as, as best we can, and have it wouldn't be one of the few things that we can actually still accomplish as a committee. Were there any questions? I mean, everyone has been through it at least once or twice, I think, Andrea? Oh, sorry, Andrea.
The, the update that was supposed to be tonight, that was rightfully taken off the agenda, will that happen at our next meeting? Or is there any time to do that beforehand, or are we just gonna call it good? Which I'm fine with.
So I'm ready to, I'll have it out to you, I'll email you that in the next couple days.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
And there's absolutely no way we can look at any of the calendars.
I, I'm gonna think about that, how I can do that, we did actually make copies, and they were in the office, so I can certainly get them and drive them to you, I don't, I'm trying to think, or, you know, certainly could maybe make copies and, and email them to the ones.
You've already made copies physically?
Yep, so we just.
Are you in the building at all?
I am, I was in there today, so I can, I can go in and get them, and I could just scan them and maybe get them to you for those that.
Can we stop by and knock on the door and you hand them to us? Is that allowed?
So, we're not in the building every day, so I can make an appointment if you want to come by and do, I mean, you know, I mean, like, just so that you know that we're there to open the door.
I hate.
Patrick gets in and out, and I'm in and out on different days, so we could, but there's nobody there all day, so we can go in and get them and, and get them to you, like I said, I'm happy to scan them and get them to you.
Terry, I would say that a scan of a sample might, might have to do, just because if you stop in to pick up a copy, then you're the only one that's gonna have that copy, and that, in order to make sure everybody actually has the same, you know, access to the same information, do you think that we could just do like a month, and run a month of the calendar and, through the scanner, and then email that out?
I don't want to cause any extra work, they're already, they're already copied, right?
So Sharon set up, what she did is she went through my calendar, because one of the requests was, on my calendar, how often I was meeting with the principals, and so she went through and made a spreadsheet, I don't know when she, she stopped that, I guess it might have been a couple weeks ago, when we started getting really busy with this, but she actually has a spreadsheet of all those dates and which principals and what states, so that's one thing, the other thing that you had asked was, Terry, I believe, you wanted to see some of the meetings that we were having with principals, see the agendas on that, and so that, we could get some samples of that and share that with you, I actually have access to doing that from home, so.
You could email maybe two months, I mean, you have them twice a month, right?
Once a month, with principals.
Once a month, every two, maybe if you could just send two of them by email, then.
Absolutely.
If that's, okay.
Yep.
And that would be nice, because then everybody would have it.
Yeah.
Alright, we will do.
Okay.
Thanks, I don't mean to cause you any extra work, but.
Well, I, I mean, it has to be a balance, you know, like, we don't want to cause extra work, but we also don't want to have an evaluation that isn't accurate, if we're gonna bother to do it, we should make sure that it's accurate.
Well, thank you.
Absolutely.
Any other questions or comments? Kelly, thank you very much. Act on $6,000 donation from Dell for specific STEM products, a motion, please?
Make a motion to accept the $6,000 donation from Dell for specific STEM products.
I'll second that.
Second? Any comment? We'll vote real quick.
It's great.
Excuse me, go ahead.
I'm just saying that's great that we're getting that.
Yes, it is fantastic, we get so many donations through a variety of things, I think it's fantastic the way people support Falmouth Schools, very good, good point, John, thank you, we'll do a roll call, Terry?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Andrea?
Yeah.
Natalie? Muted, but yes?
Yeah.
Megan?
Yes.
Melissa?
Yes.
John?
John Finer, yes.
And Bill Rider, yes. Motion to act on the $6,000 donation from Dell for specific STEM products passes, thank you. Act on preapproval for pending capital projects. I would imagine that would be, is there a motion, excuse me?
I make a motion to approve for preapproval for pending capital projects.
I'll second it.
Okay, Patrick?
So, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah.
Perfect. Anybody hear Patrick?
Yep, great.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you for this, this is a general motion that allows us a little flexibility as we attempt to move forward with two capital projects, and it's, it's the East Falmouth Univent and Control Project that we have planned for this summer, and that's one project, that project, just to, for folks, remind folks, it did go out to bid with, we had an engineer provide some consulting to us to handle the procurement, it came in within the budget, budget amount that the town had allocated for us, and then the second project is the Morse Pond Ceiling Replacement Project, and again, that project went in, out to bid, we had an architect and an owner's project manager help us put that out to bid properly, it came back in, actually well under the allocated amount of money from, from town meeting. Given the, the times we're in, we may need some flexibility in addressing or changing the dates on some of those, and this vote would just give me the flexibility to work with our, our OPM, and then more importantly, with the town council to review contracts, update contracts as necessary, as we figure out how best to proceed with these projects. Right now, I'm planning on just moving these projects forward in the summer, if something changes, we might have to, we might be able to move them up or move them back, one way or another.
Any questions for Patrick?
Yeah, Pat, I just have a question, so is the, the dynamic more that you think there'll be different things happening on the side of the vendors, that they may lose some business or something, they might want to do it sooner, that type of thing?
John, it's a couple of things, one, if, if we have, if the buildings unfortunately are available for a longer period of time, one of the projects, they would like to move it up and do it sooner, the other side of this is for the, for the other project, in order to get the equipment, it's a 10 to 12 week lead time in normal times, they, when I asked them, is that, is that going to stay the same, sort of smiled at me, they're saying it could be, it could mean that we get it in six weeks, or it could mean something different, so they're just looking for the okay to be able to move forward with the ordering of the, the Univent equipment, so that's what I'm saying, there's, on both projects, this vote would give us some flexibility, and any updates to any of the contracts with these vendors would be passed through the town council.
Gotcha, thank you.
Any other questions for Patrick? Terry?
In regards to moving town meeting, does that, of course, it must put a.
Yeah, for these projects, these projects have already been approved, they were, the monies were approved at the November town meeting, and we've been working on getting these out to bid and following procurement laws since then, so this, this, the spring town meeting doesn't impact these projects.
That's great news, thank you.
Good question, anything else? We'll vote on this roll call? Terry?
Yes.
Andrea, do you have a question? I apologize.
No.
Okay, your thing lit up, so I wasn't sure, but thank.
I think I just unmuted myself.
Okay, thank you. Kelly?
Yes.
Andrea?
Yeah.
Natalie?
Yes.
Megan?
Yes.
Melissa?
Yes.
John?
John Finer, yes.
And Bill Rider, yes, thank you, Patrick, appreciate it very much. Approved minutes of March 10th, 2020, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for March 10th, 2020.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments? Megan? Okay, any comments? We'll roll call this as well, Terry?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Andrea?
Yeah.
Natalie?
Yes.
Megan?
Yes.
Melissa?
Yes.
John?
John Finer, yes.
And Bill, yes. Okay, Superintendent's report, we already did that, Lori, do you want to make any comments on the report from Joannie on humans resources, or just that's a read for us?
This is a read for you, it's just our, in our cycle of providing written reports, this is the spring report from Joannie.
Okay, you have an opportunity to read it, please read it, it was very well done. Report, committee member reports? Anybody on committee member reports? Megan?
And so, will we be doing policy on Monday like we are now, is that kind of the plan going forward?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
So you'll be sending us a new meeting number or something?
Yes.
Okay.
Sonia's sending that out, it'll be a Zoom, yep, and we'll get that posted by Thursday, so we'll be ready.
I actually think if we can try and do an even better job, I know this was posted as we need it to be posted, but if we can try and put it on Facebook, the agenda with the announcement for when we're gonna meet next, I think we might, I think people might be more like, I'm surprised there's not more people that joined, I think that people are so desperate for information, so if we can really try and push it out, I know Melissa usually pushes it out, and so does Natalie, so maybe we can make an extra effort.
Megan does too, and.
Yeah.
That's just me.
I'm friends with you, I always pops up at the top, so I just, I just would, because it's unusual, I just want to really make sure that we make an extra effort to make announcements for our meetings that are posted.
Well, definitely.
I have a quick question.
Usually post it, so, he, oh, he just let me know that it did go out on Facebook this week.
Oh, great.
Yeah, he usually does that, so I assumed it did, but.
Yeah, for some reason, I didn't see it this time, but that doesn't mean a lot.
Excellent, okay.
Melissa?
Could maybe, could we mail our, not now, could we email our families when we're having our school committee meetings, and perhaps the subcommittees, I, again, to echo Kelly, people are very desperate for any information, maybe this is also a good time for people to get more involved, I don't know, maybe not, I just, I don't want, at the end of all of this, because this is gonna end, I, I don't want people to think that we were not forthcoming with information and how to access it.
Absolutely, yep, we can do that.
Thank you, Melissa, thank you, anyone else?
I just have a comment that the, the website in itself is a very active, I don't want to say document, but it's an active, living, breathing thing, that it's constantly being updated, and I think that's kind of our conduit, I, I don't, you know, I have no issue with any of the other things, too, but I think, you know, that's really getting the word out there, if people go to it, it's constantly updated, has a lot of links and things of that nature.
Thank you, John, good point.
Yeah, Lori has sent out so many notices and everything, they're wonderful, and I love the one where you quoted the other person, it was touching and everything, so yeah, I echo what John is saying, that we are pumping it out, so thank you.
Thank you.
I think we make a lot of attempts, and everybody's doing that, and I think that's great, anything else, any other comments? Any announcements? Andrea?
Yeah, I just wanted to throw something out there for people who might be looking for things to do.
Um, yeah, I just wanted to throw something out there for people who might be looking for things to do. And also as a way to continue this link with the partnership we're developing with the science institutions in Woodpole, that three days a week, Monday, Wednesday and Friday, they're having live webinars. The link to those can be found through the Woodpole Oceanographic Seagrass Office, the partnership with NOAA, Woodpole Oceanographic Institution, and some of our partners that many of you probably have met with throughout this process. So those are happening at 11 o'clock on Monday, Wednesday and Friday. You can find more information about the topics there. So I decided to throw that out for everyone.
There's a lot of great stuff you can find all over. Very creative, some outstanding things going on. I think it's really neat to keep kids and, and the community involved. Any other announcements? Okay, I didn't have a quote tonight. So what I was doing, I was searching for something that would maybe add a little humor with all this craziness. And there was a gentleman, my wife found this on, I don't know if it was Facebook or some, some site. But it was from Ben. Now Ben's not a Falmouth student, but I think a lot of kids are going through, what am I doing in education? And he starts out, this was 3/16/20, and Ben said, I'm homed school. H-O-M-E-D, school. And I thought that was interesting. And he says, and I'll quote Ben, "It is not going good. My mom's getting stressed. My mom is really getting confused. We took a break so my mom can figure this stuff out. And I'm telling you, it is not going good." End quote. I thought that was pretty neat from Ben. And I'm sure a lot of parents are going through, looking at things that kids are trying to do, trying to support them. And they're just as confused as probably we would be if it came to calculus or something else. But it was kind of neat. So I appreciate that from Ben. Motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second it.
You know, before, before we adjourn, can I just do something? Is everybody in the gallery mode?
Yeah.
Uh, folks in the gallery mode?
Yeah.
I had to do this. Bear with me just for one sec. Was anybody else listening to this? I'm sorry, I just had to do this. That was on my mind the whole time.
Take a picture. I'm doing a screenshot. Can I put this on, on Facebook?
Sure.
Okay.
Okay. We got the motion to adjourn. We'll do a roll call. Terry?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Andrea?
Yes.
Natalie?
Yes.
Megan?
Yes.
Melissa?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
And Bill, yes. Adjourn. Thank you.
Take care, everybody.
Hey, everyone. Stay safe. Wash your hands.
Great input.